All right, good evening. I'm gonna go ahead and call this Livingston City Commission meeting to order. It's March bit and it is, my computer says 5:32 PM. A roll call please.
Chair Newt.
Here.
Vice Chair Newt.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Willits.
Here.
And Commissioner Lyons has excused this thing.
You have a call.
Thank you. All right, well, we will start out like we always start out with public comments and this would be public comment for items that are not on our agenda this evening. Individuals are reminded that public comment should be limited to items over which the city commission has supervisory control jurisdiction or advisory power. And we we allow four minutes of public comment. We do have a timer and Greg let us know if you hit your time. We'll ask folks to come up to the podium, give us their name and their address and sign in. Leslie, you can go ahead when you're ready.
Good evening, chamber, I mean, Commissioner, as you can tell, my head's been all day.
That's okay.
So first of all, just a couple quick facts. We have four new chamber members. We now have a full, very large chamber board. There was our retreat is this Friday and I'll be sending over a document just to let you know who our new members are going to be in the community. But one of them is very, it's very excited, our new CEO of our hospital. So I'm super excited about the new board. Second of all, I just wanted to put it on public record that I had emailed all of you after working with the Western Sustainability Exchange. Master Market, Market Master is what is called officially with the state of Montana. And I'm hoping to hear back from the commission. Please read through the email, the information I sent you. And I'm hoping to hear back from the Mr. Gager moving forward on what we can do to look at the ordinances that have been placed actually quite a long time ago. And I'm, I'm hoping that I can just pass some information on to Mr. Gager about why that original ordinance came about during the time that we didn't have a lot of business in the downtown. There was a big difference between having a farmer's market and down at a park and having sidewalk vendors is what it actually states in that. In the old ordinance. So thinking that when the fees were updated and I was on vacation seeing my mom that day, I missed that meeting here. That the fees maybe should have looked at the ordinance at the time that had to do now, which is having to do with a huge impact on our farmer's market. So we would be the only city in the state of Montana that would require our vendors to have business licenses and it's a big impact to a lot of our local vendors that make soaps and earrings and cute things like that. So. Enough of that. I'm hoping that each of you, I sent the email to each of the commissioners and to Mr. Gator, take a look at that and the ordinances and maybe doing a carve out for farmers markets to take place under an umbrella, which would be at the park. Because it would affect everybody else, even Christmas stroll and everything else. So thank you for your time this evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Leslie. Yes. Okay, yeah, okay. Perfect. And then is there anyone else in the room that would like to give public comment for anything on the not on the agenda? And then if not, we'll go online. Anyone else in the room? All right, we will go online and Rusty, I see your, your hand up. So if you want to just come off mute, give us your name and address and give us your comment, please.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
We can, Rusty.
Excellent. My name is Rusty Trespass. I live at nine eight nine Swingley Road here in Livingston, Montana. I'm writing to share my profound disappointment with you all concerning regarding the absence of a school resource officer. The safety and security of our children should be top priority, guys, and the removal of our resource officer leaves our students vulnerable and at risk. I recently met with the principal and vice principal of the middle school and they expressed their frustration and overwhelmed state due to having to handle tasks that shouldn't be managed by a resource officer. This not only impacts the staff's ability to effectively teach our children, but also jeopardizes the safety and well being of everyone in the school community. It is crucial that we prioritize the safety of our children and allocate the necessary funds within our budget to reinstate a school resource officer. This position is essential in maintaining a secure learning environment and providing a sense of protection for our students and staff. The absence of a resource officer has significantly altered the dynamics of our schools and it is imperative that we address this issue promptly. I urge you, city commissioners, city manager, recognize the urgency of this matter and take immediate action to ensure the safety of our schools. This issue should be given priority over the matters such as buying a garbage truck or annexing property. As the well being of our children should always come first. Thank you for your attention. I truly feel this way and let's get on a school resource officer now.
Thank you, Rusty. Any other public comments? Mr. Gator, did you want to address anything?
You know, I'd be happy to address the, the last public commenter. Not only as the city manager, but also as someone with two young children in the Livingston Public Schools and would just advise the community that the lack of a school resource officer in the Livingston Public Schools over the last several months has nothing to do with budget issues or concerns. Quite honestly, we've had some staffing challenges in the police department over the sixteen months that I've been here. The former school resource officer actually lost his housing in the city at the end of last school year and we were able to bring him back for the beginning of the school year, but unfortunately he, he made a professional decision to move on. At this point, we don't have, we have one trained school resource officer who serves as our chief. We have identified school resource officer candidates that we will train and move into the position. Please know this is something that we are working on actively and we do have that resources that that are always available to respond to the school needed.
Thank you. Right, so I'm gonna go ahead and close public comments for items on the agenda. All right, so we're gonna move on to consent items. Did you want to start with anything?
Yeah, if I could, commissioners, I do genuinely apologize with item D, the purchase order two zero zero seven one forty garbage truck in the fiscal impact section. The staff report erroneously notes that this was not included in the budget. I would like to just be clear, there is three hundred and ninety thousand dollars included in the solid waste budget. That's number one of your budget books there. And so this, this purchase is completely funded in the FY twenty four approved budget. Apologize for the type of graph layer there.
And that was G as in George, just so that folks are looking. Okay, thank you, Mr. Gager. Thank you for that update. All right, consent items. Commissioners, are there any consent items you would like pulled?
Like the whole number A, please.
Okay, great. We'll pull that out.
And G.
And G, okay. Well, and we'll deal with those separately after this. So Commissioner Schwartz, anything from you?
No.
Okay.
And everything, it's okay to me.
Okay, so we're gonna pull A, we're gonna pull G.
To motion.
I would love a motion.
Make a motion to approve consent items B through F and H.
Have a second.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Newt and a second by Schwartz and that is for items B through F and H. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, well, let's start with consent item A, Commissioner Willits, you asked for that one to be pulled.
Yeah, I just want to edit one line, please. Page twelve, line three, I'd like to change just how that's written a little bit. I'd like to strike out the word thoughts and I'd like it to read Commissioner Willits expressed to the city manager that the finance director should be involved with this item. Those are the only changes I'd like to make.
Mr. Gator, did you get that?
I, I got that and I would suggest that that very accurately reflects the conversation. So thank you, Commissioner, for the misstatement.
No problem.
Anything else on that item? All right. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve of that inside item A.
And just add your.
With the edit of page twelve, line three, striking thoughts and adding to the city manager.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Willits and a second by Schwartz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Vice Chair Newt.
Yeah, I just have some questions.
Sure.
This is about the garbage truck. Which I feel like it's something that we talked about for years. Is that right, Commissioner Schwartz? I feel like we've talked about this for a really long time.
Yeah.
We're always repairing them. I'm, I'm wondering, I guess, it's a question for Mr. Gager, like, do we have a plan? So this is not the norm where we have apparently four non operational trucks. I, I do remember like seeing some feedback from the community or hearing feedback from the community about concerns and service. And I don't think it was a staff error. I think it was an equipment error and also I guess this is my first question, like, do we have a plan in place so that this is not an ongoing issue?
Yes, absolutely. The, the finance director and I work through a capital improvement plan development and or update each year as part of the budget process. And as the staff report notes, there was a, a truck that was ordered in in twenty twenty two, August of twenty twenty two. And one, one thing that became apparent in the city managers meetings that I was in last week is that we are all struggling to get specialized equipment from vehicles to fire vehicles to solid waste and snow plows. I, I hate to sound like a bit of a broken record, but this is just kind of a hangover from the supply chain issues that started in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. And it is, is taking a year to two years to get a special service angle.
I just want to acknowledge that that's it's one person, I think, one city staff person that does all that work for the whole community. Like, everybody in town relies on this one person and this equipment. And so I, I realize that there's a lot of people right now hammering city government and I just, I feel like it's important to recognize how efficient this one, well, lots of people. This is one example of one person that's doing a lot with equipment that's not not suitable for the work that he does. And he's also doing a lot extra experimenting with trying bear cans and things like that. And he's doing a lot for our community and I think it's important to like recognize when people talk about the city, they're talking about all of us, including the guy that comes around and picks up everybody's trash. And so so thank you to him for making it work with equipment that's failing and it must be so frustrating. He's been waiting for years for equipment that works. So thank you to him. I'm excited that we can pass this through and that hopefully can take care of the issues and the whole community can be served again reliably. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair. The, the whole team over in solid waste does a tremendous job to serve the community and, and your recollection is correct. It was this past Labor Day weekend when both of our trucks went down and, and that we couldn't get the backup from those men. And so the, the team did come in and work on Labor Day Mondays, my recollection, to, to make the garbage collection happen. So it is a dedicated group of individuals, as all these are. So I appreciate the recognition.
Yeah, so it's one person does it, but the whole group steps in when he's needing help.
We, so just to clarify, we have two drivers.
So there's two drivers. That's still impressive, though. For the whole town, only two people. I mean, I don't know about your houses, but like it's hard to get anybody to take the trash out to the back. And he's like picking up all of our trash or these two people are bringing up all the trash. So it's impressive. And I just wanted to like acknowledge that that was not operator error. So thanks to the community too for being patient with them. That's it.
Thank you.
Can I add on to that?
Yeah, please do.
And it's nice to have control over it instead of a vendor, an outside contractor doing it. I still think, I do believe it's beneficial to us. We save money that way, but also it's a, the personal, personal touch that, you know, I always generally in summer, I, I meet a garbage man in the alley. We chat. So, yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Newt for pointing out that we do have a fine team there.
Yeah.
I yield.
That's all that I have to say about that. Thank you. I'm glad that there's a plan also that you and the finance director are taking care of it. Thank you. Do you want a motion? Well, as commissioners, anything else?
I just want to ask the city manager, is the, the freightliner M two, is that the two hundred or the three hundred and sixty horsepower? Wow, that's a, you know, I might defer over to the public works director who I noticed is online. Shannon, if you'd like to come off mute, I think we had a question about the horsepower in the vehicle.
It is, uh, it is the over three hundred and thirty cubic inch, our horsepower engine in that freightliner, yes.
Nice.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Willits.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes.
We'd be happy to take you for a drive.
Yeah.
Awesome.
That would be fun.
And they'll probably let you beep the horn too.
Not at my house. It's six AM, please.
Talking about body retention to you.
That was my question about.
Is this gonna be a long meeting?
At this rate, at this rate. So are we ready to?
I think so.
Anything else? Okay, I would, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. And I'm G.
Second.
Okay, it's of a motion by Newt and a second by Schwartz. All in favor? Motion carries. Okay. So I have a proclamation to read and before we do that, there's some special young ladies in the audience this evening. Some from Girl Scout troop two zero zero four and some from Girl Scout troop two five six five. And I would love it, ladies, if you would come up here and stand at the front of the room while I read this proclamation. Would you come and stand up here? It's okay. I don't bite. I promise. Can you be brave? I know you can. Look at how strong these young women are. All right, you wanna look at, you gonna look this way and I'm gonna read this to you. How about that? All right. Ready? Okay, so I have a proclamation of the Livingston City Commission declaring March twelfth, twenty twenty four National Girl Scout Day in the city of Livingston. Whereas Girl Scouts was founded in nineteen twelve by Juliet Gordon Lowe, whose life mission was to build girls of courage, competence and character and whose legacy continues to have an extraordinary influence on the lives of millions of girls across the country, including the city of Livingston. And whereas the Girl Scout, Girl Scouts started in Livingston in the nineteen seventies with hundreds of scouts. Today, there are six troops with around sixty scouts and at least two leaders per troop and many, many dedicated adult volunteers. These girls work hard to obtain badges and skill sets in each level of girl scouting, starting at daisies all the way to ambassadors. And whereas the Girl Scouts follow the motto, be prepared, while learning to be honest, fair, friendly, helpful, considerate, caring, courageous and strong. The Girl Scouts offer hands-on, girl-led, girl-centered learning in the outdoors, entrepreneurship and abundant opportunities to develop individual life skills, helping girls take the lead early and often. And whereas girls, whereas girl scouting is continuing a legacy of creating leadership in the United States and in the world by providing girls with the tools to become leaders dedicated to making the country and a world a better place. And now therefore be resolved on behalf of the living Livingston City Commission, I Carrie Kale, Chair, do her believe, do hereby declare March twelfth, twenty twenty four to be National Girl Scout Day in Livingston, Montana. Thank you, ladies.
Yeah, I know.
Vice Chair Newt.
So my first question for you, Daisy, is, is it cookie season?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
I would strongly recommend you swing by City Hall because I've seen what's in their break. And, uh, you know, just kindly ask the city employees and you might catch a commissioner there too, that wants to put it in order. Also, I'm a Girl Scout and I have been since I was six years old and I still am. I think you have like a government badge probably coming up. Yeah, daisies, brownies, maybe. Daisies for democracy. If you need some help, we might be able to get you a hookup. We also know some people that work in City Hall that like kids also, they might be able to like help with the hookup, burning a badge if you need it. Yeah. Yeah, thanks for coming. It's late.
Yeah.
It's late for daisies.
Yeah. Thank you, ladies.
Bye, daisies.
All right. Thank you, everyone. All right, we'll move on to our action items. Action item A, ordinance thirty forty six and ordinance of the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana, amending chapter thirty zoning of the Livingston Municipal Code by altering section thirty point forty as it relates to residential uses in the neighborhood commercial zoning district. Mr. Gator.
Thank you, Chair Kail. The item before you is the second reading of ordinance three zero four six, though it is, I think by my count, perhaps the sixth time that we've talked about this ordinance. And as you may recall, this ordinance and this action before you really sprung from the twenty twenty two legislative session within the state of Montana. And Senate Bill two four five is, is the, the bill which allowed the, the development of multi-unit housing in commercial zones of five or more units. And as you know, we previously allowed one unit in to be constructed in the neighborhood commercial. And through commission discussion, the, the city is, is allowing that gap of two, three and four units to be constructed in a commercial building in the neighborhood commercial, or excuse me, in the neighborhood commercial. And so I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, clarifying questions? Anyone?
It seems to me the last meeting had a pretty well covered, spent a lot of time on it and I think some good changes were made. Yeah, so I have none, that, nothing additional.
Commissioner Willits, any questions? Vice Chair Newt.
I wonder what's left to ask.
Or he's not here.
So I would, I would entertain a motion before we move to public comment.
I will make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance three zero four six. Ordinance of the city of Livingston, Montana, amending chapter thirty zoning of the Livingston Municipal Code by altering section thirty point four D as it relates to residential uses in the neighborhood commercial zoning district and authorize a chair to sign the ordinance.
I have a motion. One second.
One second.
I can be Willits. Motion by Schwartz, second by Willits. So we'll go ahead now and open this up to public comments. Let's go ahead and start with folks in the room. Is there anyone in the room that would like to make a public comment? All right, I'm not seeing anyone in the room, so we'll go online. Would anyone online like to make public comment on ordinance thirty forty six? Feel free to raise your hand. And if that doesn't work, you can also just come out, come off mute and give us your name. All right, I am not seeing any public comments online nor in the room. So go ahead and close public comments. Commissioners, deliberation? Any other further comments in this one?
I have nothing. I yield.
Anyone else?
I'll just reiterate that I'm looking forward to when we can distinguish between all of these codes because they're becoming more and more similar and therefore more and more meaningless because they're not as distinct. So I'll look forward to that this year.
Yeah, for them, because we are doing a zoning update. So, yes, okay. Well, if that is it, a roll call, please.
Chair Kail.
Four.
Vice Chair Newt.
Four.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Four.
Commissioner Willits.
Four.
Motion carries. Okay, we're gonna move on to action item B, ordinance thirty forty nine. An ordinance of the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana, amending section thirty point one three of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled Official Zoning Map of the city of Livingston by zoning property located at fifty two eighty four U.S. Highway eighty nine South, recently annexed and generally known as R Y Timber as light industrial. Mr. Gator.
Thank you, Chair Kail. The item for you is the second reading of ordinance three zero four nine, which as you noted, is to apply zoning to the parcel or property commonly known as R Y Timber, recently purchased by Sun Mountain Lumber Company. And as, as the chair noted, the staff recommendation has been to zone this as light industrial. And, and that, that zoning use is, is consistent with the, the use that is currently on the parcel as well as allows for, for, for future uses that would feel compatible with the area and with the intent of the conversations in the growth policy, if not the recommendations in the growth policy. And of course, I think that, that deviation there is, is due to the change in allowable uses in the, in the recommended underlying zone in the growth policy. And so at this point, both myself and Planning Director Severson will stand for any questions you may have.
Commissioners, clarifying questions?
One here.
Commissioner Willits?
I think me.
Vice Chair Newt? I have no clarifying question, so I would entertain a motion.
Do we need to note that this is a second reading as we did in first order or?
For farmer. I don't know that it was in there. So yeah. Yeah, let's note that. So this, this is a second reading of this ordinance. We have seen this one more time, once before. And we voted this, we moved this forward. So we do need to look at it again and vote on it a second time.
Well, I'll make, I'll just add it to it, I guess.
Great, thanks.
I am look to approve the second reading of ordinance three zero four nine to Mountain City. Livingston zoning code section three zero point one three related to the official zoning map and authorize the chair to sign ordinance three zero four nine.
Is there a second?
One second.
Okay. And a motion by Schwartz and a second by Willits. We will go ahead and open it to public comment. So let's start with folks in the room. Is there anyone in the room that would like to make public comment on the second reading of ordinance thirty forty nine? No one in the room. We'll go online. Is there anyone online that would like to make a public comment? Again, feel free to raise your hand or come off mute and just give us your name. All right, seeing none. We'll go ahead and close public comments. Commissioners, deliberation?
Actually, do I have a question?
Sure.
Um, the last time we talked about this, I brought up how since activity has resumed at the property, neighbors downwind are noticing impacts. And the city manager, you had mentioned that you would be able to follow up with DEQ. Have you had a chance to do that?
So I did submit an inquiry into DEQ related to air quality testing, related to industrial properties and specifically sawmills in the state of Montana. And I have not heard back from them with specifics on that. That said, we have been, I specifically have been reviewing the air quality monitors that we have. I specifically have been reviewing the air quality monitors that we have. I, I think I noted in our last conversation that we've got one that's approximately seven to eight blocks away from, from the, the, the northern boundary of the property. And, um, those, those monitors have, have, um, not been, um, it doesn't seem like they're picking up anything more than they were during the period when the mill was not operational. But that said, uh, we understand from, um, some other work that we are doing on the property and specifically with the fire line installation that, that you folks may recall was really the genesis of this annexation action. And so we do know that, that the mill is not currently operating at, at full capacity or really anything close to that. And so, uh, I, I will follow up with, uh, with DEQ, uh, in the, um, their information.
Can you, um, ask about, cause I. What are the PMs that those air monitors pick up? Is it like PM 10 or 25, do you know?
Um, you know, I actually had a lower number in my head that it was picking up. I, I wouldn't say it was almost 2.5, that's what it could have been.
And then can you ask them about? Like, I can't remember what exactly it's called, like nuisance dust, or there's something that wouldn't be picked up by air monitors but still be impacting. Neighborhood communities, because if the particles are too big, the monitors won't pick them up, but it still could be impacting the community. Can you find out like what other kinds of things they regulate, just? Just because I've gotten this question repeatedly before the change of ownership. Um, and since it came back and also. Like some city staff, I heard about debris that was coming into the neighborhood during fire, like pretty sizable debris and how the community, that little neighborhood. Came together to help each other during a kind of terrifying experience. Um, if you could just like find out the other things besides just the PM, that would be really helpful, I think, for those neighbors.
I certainly will, uh, will add fugitive dust to the inquiry.
Fugitive dust, okay.
Great.
Thank you.
You still have to do it?
Um, that's really my main concern is that we can like get that address. I think there's a way that. Businesses and residents, like residential neighborhoods can be good neighbors with each other, but it sometimes takes local government to help facilitate it. So I'd rather not just. Ignore the community. I'd rather address their concerns. Thank you. That's it.
Any other deliberation? On the starting?
I have.
Anything else? I don't think so. I think we, I think we addressed like all the concerns and how it was a hard. Like it's a difficult decision when it's so close to the river and we've all seen the impacts of flooding and that, um. Yeah, I, I think we've addressed all of those concerns pretty adequately the last meeting.
Yeah, I would agree with you. I think that we really weigh the pros and cons of the types of zoning and what would could be there, what would not be there. And, um, I think that we had a really thorough discussion about that and came to a good conclusion. Um, okay. If we're ready, uh, follow the roll. Roll call, please.
Chair Kale.
For.
Vice Chair Newitz.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Willits.
For.
Motion passes. All right, moving on to ordinance C, ordinance 35, or excuse me, action item C, ordinance 3050. And this is also a second reading, so this is a second reading of an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, amending section 30. Point 13 of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled Official Zoning Map of the City of Livingston by zoning the property. Addressed as one of U Vista Drive and legally described as parcel one in section 13 Township 2 South. Uh, range nine east. Uh, cert- certificate of survey 984, recently annexed and generally known as the View Vista Community as mixed views. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Kale. Uh, as you noted, the item for you is the second reading of ordinance 3050. And, uh, this ordinance seeks to apply zoning to the duly annexed Vista Community. And, uh, as a reminder, the, uh, the city is going through this action as a result of a request from the community. And, uh, and, uh, this action will, uh, be another step in, in the city and the community's, um, joint efforts to, uh, review the water and sewer that, uh, currently serves the property. Um, and, and take care of some, some issues with the, the old system there. And so, uh, at, uh, the prior meeting, uh, the commission deliberated, um, the mixed use zoning designation and, um, uh. Director Severson and I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, any clarifying questions?
Not for me.
Okay. Well, I don't have any either. Again, we, I thought we talked this through quite a bit last time. Um, if that's the case, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the second reading ordinance 3050 to amend the City of Livingston zoning code section 30.13 related to the official zoning map and to authorize the chair to sign ordinance 3050.
One second.
I'll be happy to second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Willits and a second of Schwartz. Uh, we can open this up to public comments. Anyone in the room that would like to make comment on ordinance 3050? All right, uh, going online, anyone online? Is there anyone online that would like to make comments on, uh, this ordinance? Feel free to come off mute and give us your name and address. I don't see any public comment. We'll ask one more time. I'm not seeing anyone. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comments. Uh, commissioners deliberation.
I think we were pretty comprehensive at the last reading, so I have nothing new to offer. Are you? Yeah, I agree. I'm gonna drop it out.
I am just really grateful that this is such a long project. It's one of a couple really, really long projects where the city is partnering with, um, housing nonprofits to keep people housed and to not lose housing for. Vulnerable members of our community who might otherwise. Um, experience housing instability. So I'm really excited that this is moving forward and that, um, it's moving at a pace that works for the community also.
Well, I would agree with you and I love this because this has become a resident owned community too, so that really gives those residents, you know, a real piece of. Their own equity, you, they have a say in what they're, where their property and what they're living on and, and, you know, in that community and so. I'm really excited to see this become a resident owned community and what that means for those residents. Um, so yes, I'm, I'm excited about this. All right, anything else?
No, ma'am.
All right, roll call, please.
Chair Kale.
For.
Vice Chair Newitz.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Willits.
For.
Motion carries. Great. Our last action item of the evening, resolution 5127, a resolution of the City of Livingston Commission authorizing the submission of a grant application to FEMA assistance to. To firefighter grant commitment of needed funds and authorizing the city manager or designate to enter into required contracts for grant funds to purchase a new ladder truck. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Kale. It's, uh, is the grant season that is upon us and so the item before you folks is, uh, support for a, uh, the, uh, a city submission. They've granted the FEMA Assistance to Firefighter Grant Program and the specific application is a, a request for funding. To replace the city's current aerial tower truck, uh, with a similar, uh, aerial tower, uh, quint type vehicle. And, uh, the, the program pays approximately 95% of the, the cost of the equipment, uh, which we estimate based on a, a recent quote from the manufacturer at, uh, 1.84 million. And, uh, the, the city's share on that would be approximately 92,109 dollars if we were awarded the grant. And I, I guess before I turn it over to you folks for questions, I will, I will point out, uh. Only five years ago in my career, I had the opportunity to, uh, help a city purchase a similar truck for 1.3 million. So, uh, the, the cost escalation, um, that, that has occurred in the last several years is, is very real and impactful. And I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, clarifying questions?
Questions about horsepower, maybe?
I got lots of questions about that stuff, but I found it all online. Uh, I used, I believe I actually was on our city's fire truck, uh, aerial truck. For the old Clara's Closet Fire when I was a Park County Rural Fire. We had a mutual aid.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, it's fun. I like walking on the ladder and 100 feet is a long way up on the altar. But I have no questions. Those are just.
Yeah, just one clarifying.
Yes.
For Mr. Gager, how old is the one that we have now, um? That we're, we're replacing one, right?
Uh, we are. Our current ladder is 23 years old.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And, and, um, we recently had, uh, the manufacturer come in and do some repairs to the tower itself, actually to the ladder itself. Um, so that it could be, uh, properly used and safely used by the crews.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Vice Chair. No questions, no question. Okay. I don't have any questions either. Uh, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution 5127 and authorize the chair to sign the resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for FEMA AFG grants.
Second.
Hey, I have a motion by Willits and a second by Schwartz and we will go ahead and open it up to public comment. So let's go ahead and start in the room. Anyone have a public comment about resolution 5127? Please feel free to come on up. I am proud of that. All right, I don't see anyone in the room, um, so let's go ahead and go online. Is there anyone online that would like to make a public comment? About resolution 5127. Feel free to come off mute and give us your name. I am not seeing anyone. Just ask one more time, either in the room or online. Anyone like to make comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Commissioners deliberation. Mr. Schwartz.
Um, wow, what a deal. Not having to go out for a bond to, um, to finance something like this. This is really huge, um. And a great savings to the taxpayers of Livingston, so. Um, yeah, I hope we get it. Yeah, I really, really do, realizing the other piece is 25 years old. And, uh, it's, yeah, morning past time to, uh. Replace it. So with that. I yield.
Okay. Commissioner Schwartz.
Uh, well, if that truck is as old as I am. It, it's ready for a replacement. I, uh, no, I think this is excellent and I think it's a fantastic opportunity for us, uh, if we do get the, this grant. I think, uh, I mean, we need the equipment, but to have the money to be able to do that without going directly to the taxpayer, that is fantastic, so. Best of luck on getting that.
What Schwartz said.
What Schwartz said.
And, um, so I'm remembering a tour of the fire department. And they're named after like the horses that used to pull. The original fire trucks, yeah.
Oh, and the trucks are named, you didn't know this?
No. Fun Livingston fact. I'm sharing, do you know this? Can you ask the?
I absolutely follow up on this.
I learned it from a, I learned it from like a past chief, so if it's wrong. I blame him. But I, I think, I, I think, I think, I think they're named after, and there's gotta be pictures of this somewhere. Like the horses that used to pull, you know, from Fireball downtown, like the original, and I think they named the trucks after. Those horses, so I'm curious, like, or mules are like, I could be getting the animal wrong, you know, but they'll correct me, I'm sure. The guys over there from, and gals, the humans over there will correct me. You could find out, that would be fun. Just fun fact, information to know.
That's a, that's a great tidbit of information.
I mean, I don't know if it's.
Well.
We'll see, but I agree with, um, Commissioner Schwartz. I feel like usually we have to purchase things as a city. It doesn't come to us like this and we're seeing it in the budget book for. Many cycles before it's out of the budget book, so it's nice.
No, this is a great opportunity and so thank you for. Recognizing it and going after it. Um, I guess I do have one question, but do you know what the cycle like, what, when we might know?
Uh, I do believe that we will know at least by August is my recollection of these AFG grants.
Great. Wonderful, thank you. All right, anything else? Roll call, please.
Chair Kale.
For.
Vice Chair Newitz.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Willits.
For.
Motion carries. Right.
Can we take a break?
Really?
I just feel weird being, not even 6:30 yet.
Oh, no, that wasn't, that was a question.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we're moving on. Please manage your comments, Mr. Gager.
Uh, well, thank you, Chair Kale. I caught myself a little off guard with, with how early it is, so, um, uh, appreciate that. And, uh, I would point out, um, to the commission, excuse me, as well to the community, uh, that earlier today, um, related to the Wellness Center project. And the soil testing that the city commission, uh, requested, uh, we did receive the results of the phase two environmental tests that were performed, uh, within the footprint of Katie Benell Park. And expected footprint of a building if, uh, if the Wellness Center project moves forward. And, uh, the, the results of that have been posted on our website. Um, it's available from the homepage by clicking on the banner on top and then scrolling to the bottom of that page there. Um, but I've also forwarded you folks a, a copy of that as well and, uh, happy to report that there are, um, no metals or, um, issues associated with the, the Burnleyton Northern Rail Yard. Uh, complex that is adjacent to the site and, uh, in the estimation of, uh, the engineers that performed phase two environmental. Uh, hinder the, uh, the, the presence of the Wellness Center, uh, on that location. Um, they did recommend a, uh, a soil vapor barrier and, uh, mitigation system because there was, uh, some chloroform levels that were detected in one of the three, uh, test pit locations. However, the, um, the prevailing theory at this point actually is that that chloroform exists as a result of our, uh, use of chlorinated water to irrigate the park. Um, during the summer, uh, chloroform is actually the natural byproduct of, of chlorination and, and as it breaks down into gaseous state. And so, uh, you know, the, the engineers, um, uh, report, uh, seems to, uh, confirm and concur with, uh, the, the DEQ conversations that, that myself and others in the city had. Uh, this summer and fall. And so at, at this point, um, I, I think there, uh, there have not been any issues that have been identified. So happy to report that. Again, full report, uh, with data tables is available on the website. Um, and then a, a quick note to you folks that, uh, I will be, um, uh, out of the office, uh, for a portion of next week. Uh, but it'll be by phone and email if you need me and, um, appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner comments. Mr. Excuse me, Commissioner Willits. Mr. Commissioner.
Interestingly short meeting. Thank you all for, uh, blazing through it all and, uh. It's great for us now.
I yield.
Mr. Schwartz.
No. Keep the brief, uh, uh. I have nothing.
Okay.
I yield.
Vice Chair Newitz.
Yeah. I would just, um. Like to clarify or ask for clarity and since the Mr. Gager just said, he said there's no medals. I think you meant to say. Lower, below action level limits.
That, yeah, thank you for that clarification, yes.
Just for people who. You know, care about the finer points. I know what you meant. I just wanted to make sure it's clear since this is important issue for.
And I apologize.
That's okay, that's okay, um. I know we've been getting emails about the Wellness Center also, um. I just would. Remind people, um, that the commission voted. To have the community have to say on what happens. You're welcome to always send us your emails. However, it's not our decision to make, um, what happens next. Um, so. Ballots were mailed. If you have questions, you can always go upstairs. To the, I'm pointing upstairs to where the clerk and reporter is, where you can ask if you get a ballot and how do you, how to vote. Um, but that is the. Um, but that is the power that you all have in the City of Livingston. Um, that's not the commission's decision to make, nor is it the government's decision to make um the executive branch either, so. Yeah, I hope that people will um. Make their voice heard by voting. Uh, it's up to you, what happens next. Um. Also, I just. I'm observing that I think this is the most divisive Livingston has felt, at least for me, I've been on the commission now, gosh, about five and a half years. Um, and for me, this is the second most divisive time I've ever felt it, the first being the pandemic. I don't know if other people in our community feel that, but I sure do. Um. Seems like things were feeling pretty good last year, like we'd came over the hump and we were peeling from the flood and all the other tragedies that happened and um. A community, not a commission thing, thing to figure out, we'll have to figure that out together. Um, but I think a lot of people in our community are having a lot of big feelings and it's all very valid right now. Um. So just wanna honor that and say it out loud, since I think a lot of people are feeling it and I hope that we can come together and figure it out, whatever happens next, because you all have the power and the say. Cause uh, it's not real fun right now, I don't think for a lot of us. That's all I have to say.
We made the decisions that we could, which was to identify a location and put it on the ballot so folks could make that decision. Um. I will say I know because people's have questions and. You know, we have information up on the city website, there's information in other places. I know that there will be a question and answer opportunity tomorrow at the Elks. If people are interested in that, um, and that is at. At five-thirty at the Elks tomorrow, so if people are looking for a place to go and listen and learn and ask questions. Uh, I might recommend that you go, go, go do that, um, so that you can learn more and then make your decision. Um. Other than that, I know that we are headed into spring break next week. Uh. Livingston schools are off next week for spring break, so safe travels and for all that are maybe out traveling around, let's pray for more snow, because I bet people want to ski too. And do all the fun snow things. Um. Thank you for a efficient meeting this evening, all, and um. That's all I have. I have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion by Schwartz.
I'll second that.
Second by Willich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, this meeting of the Livingston City Commission is adjourned at six twenty-five P.M. Good night, everyone.